There we go, all right. All right, let's pray. Our dear Heavenly Father, we want to say thank you for opportunities that you give to us to be able to serve you. We thank you for the city of Watertown, for these men and women, for the investment that they make in our community. We're grateful. We also want to say thank you for the beautiful snow that we've enjoyed. It reminds us, we put our trust in you, that our sins are washed whiter than snow. We do pray for our community tonight with the cold weather. We ask for safety for those who have to work and be traveling and just all of the events of the evening for safety and protection. And then we pray for our elected officials now that you'll give them wisdom in their deliberations, give them unity of thought and mind. And we just pray that you would just bless Watertown. Directing the elections tomorrow might this week be one in which we bring honor and glory to you, and we'll praise you and thank you for that in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, it is 7:01. I just want to make sure remotely you can hear me.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Blenke. So with that, I'm going to call to order our Monday, February 17th Common Council Meeting. Megan, would you please take the role?
Davis.
Here.
Lampy.
Here.
Board.
Here.
Barts.
Here.
Blenke.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Wetzel.
Here.
Mildenhauer.
Here.
Very good. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the minutes of the council meeting from February 4th. Anyone have any comments or questions? Mr. Barts.
Under the ordinances, you might be aware of this already, but at least my copy does not say. Then 2502. Who motioned and supported?
Any other comments or questions? All right. We do have an opportunity for comments from citizens present. I'm assuming we have none in the room, Megan. Anyone remotely that would like to comment? All right, then let's move to reports. We have the Licensing Board minutes from December 11th, Tourism from January 9th, Plan Commission from January 13th, Board of Health from January 21st, and Public Safety and Welfare from February 5th. Anybody have comments or questions on any of those? All right, so let's move to Communications and Recommendations. We have, the first item there is employee recognition. We do have one employee recognition this evening. My page is... And we are recognizing Julie Koki-Krieger for 25 years with Park Rec and Forestry. Quite an incredible accomplishment, so thank you to Julie for your years of service to our city. Next item is the Watertown Fire Department Monthly Report. Anybody have any questions, comments I can take back to the chief? All right, then let's move to our Bridge update. So when I spoke to you all last, we had received notification that there were issues with the spandrels and the arches. Since that time, I have, I'm reading directly from a briefing paper I was provided by the DOT. So I'm going to provide a little bit of information from the 28th, and then some additional new information. So actually, on the 28th was, I've already covered, that's when the arches, where we learned about the spandrels and the arches. The new item that was discovered after the spandrels and the arches was on January 28th, ZTI notified the Department of Transportation that the anchor inserts in the arches did not line up with the sleeves in the fascia girder. ZTI and DOT have gone through a process of evaluating the 3D scan that we alluded to at the last meeting. So ZTI performed the 3D scan of the bridge, and the results of that scan were indeed presented to the department on the 5th. We met on the 4th. The magnitude of the errors in fabrication continued to change as ZTI provided more information. In the meeting on the 5th, ZTI disclosed there was indeed another error in one of the pipe sleeves through the fascia girder. This was the first time an error in the fascia girder was discussed with the department. Andrew and I learned of that error seven days later on December 12th, excuse me, February 12th. So based on the 3D scan results, ZTI did feel as though they had options to investigate, so they presented those options to the department on how to correct the errors. Concepts were provided to the department as soon as the 6th of February. They were evaluated by the Bureau of Structures and other project staff. The department then directed ZTI to refabricate the arches.
I'm watching the meeting.
Mr. Larson, you're not on mute. And any spandrels that did not meet the modification tolerances. The department felt like there were viable options to salvage the fascia girder, and they did provide ZTI the opportunity to investigate other alternatives to reuse the fascia girder. ZTI provided those details on 12/12, and an acceptable correction that allowed for that fascia girder to be used was approved by the department. So what this all means is, the fascia girder does have some structural aspects to the bridge. So that one is, they're all important, but that one is particularly important. They do believe that the fascia girder can essentially be refurbished, which saves time. What does need to be refabricated are the arches and the spandrels, and there are some spandrels that are within a range of correction, those would be corrected. Those that are not within that range of correction would be refabricated. The refurbishment process did begin last Monday. They are still looking at this point at a completion anticipated to be in mid-April with the caveat for, of course, the weather. Liquidated damages will start on March 2nd, and they are at $5,000 per calendar day. I did have a conversation with the Assistant Deputy Secretary of the Department last week, and just shared my frustration and continued disappointment in the progress of this project. The Assistant Deputy Secretary met me, I believe, at that frustration and disappointment. The Secretary's Office is aware of the continued issues with this contractor, and they continue to take action to expedite the delivery of the project. These are comments from, from the Assistant Deputy Secretary. And the Secretary's Office is engaging the contractor at the highest level in an effort to resolve these ongoing problems. So what that all means, from last time to this time, is they did indeed, if I were to summarize it, determine that they were fabricated incorrectly. They did not follow the steps. The project plan outlines a specific sequence for measuring the spandrels, and that was not followed. So they were indeed fabricated incorrectly, and since that point in time, they have begun the refurbishment of the necessary components and the determination that the fascia girder could be refurbished. The other item that was presented at our update last week was about the railings. The railings are complete, so these are like the metal railings that would, would go up along the sides of the bridge. And I did ask that they, if anyone had measured those, and they had not, and I did ask them to measure them. And after a little bit of conversation, they did say that they would get as-built measurements of the railings before they're delivered to the site. So the one thing that will continue, you know, obviously Andrew will be a part of this continued process with the bridge. It is something that's going to need chronic oversight, and this project will no longer complete while I'm still in this job. So we just need to make sure, well, I'm, I'm assuming, I'm done mid-April, they're saying mid-April, but I just want to make sure that we continue to stay very closely involved with the completion of the project. Because I would have hoped someone from the DOT would have suggested to measure the railings, or perhaps ZTI would have thought to measure them themselves. But we had to have more conversation about that than I would have hoped for. So they will be measured before they arrive, and hopefully if need any adjustments, those are made very swiftly. What questions can I answer for you? Mr. Schmidt.
You mentioned that the fascia has some issues that they feel with some modifications will work.
Yes.
That's nice, but how much life expectancy are we losing on the back end versus saving some time now versus years on the back end that we're going to lose from a maintenance standpoint? That's my concern.
Sure. Andrew, do you have any insight on that?
Sure. So the maintenance has been something kind of at the forefront of these discussions. We don't want to take on added maintenance responsibilities by gaining a few weeks or months. It's my understanding, it's our understanding that we won't be sacrificing quality through these discussions and with what we accept as a final product.
Other questions, comments?
Did the answer, did we ever get an answer on if this was a fabrication or a specification error?
Yes. So the items were not fabricated according to the plan, so it was a fabrication error. If you, I pointedly asked ZTI that question, and they said it was, it was a fabrication error, but the plans never would have worked anyway. But that's kind of what they say every time. So the take home, seriously, but the take-home message, Mr. Blenke, is that they were not fabricated to the plans.
And that's due to ZTI's lack of oversight of the fabric, excuse me, I apologize, of the fabrication?
Yes. We know that they did not provide, or they did not follow the sequence for fabrication. So they're supposed to, there's a sequence for measuring the spandrels as an example, and they did not abide by that sequence. And when asked why not, they didn't, Andrew, I don't recall them providing any type of answer that was substantive.
I don't either.
Yeah, they just were kind of like, because we didn't. Was really the answer.
I'd like to attempt to do something here to see if it will work.
Sure.
It's going to let me share my screen.
Let me see here. I might have to invite you.
Otherwise, I can give you the specific website to go to of what I'm looking at. My disappointment upon doing a little research was expanded, as I discovered, ZTI has built a bridge that is virtually identical to what they're building now. And I just wanted to make everyone aware of that, and I know it doesn't change anything, but at least...
I think you should be able to. I made you a host. Is it letting you do that now? Am I missing anything? Okay. Yep, there it's showing up now.
All right, so this might look a little familiar.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the, you're seeing West Sixth Street Bridge. This was built, you'll notice it's the Walbeck Group, but if you go to this page and scroll down a little, you'll find out that it is, in fact, ZTI is a subsidiary of that company. But you can see the arches where they meet up, the spandrels. So upon, upon discovering this, I just wanted to show the rest of the council, because upon discovering this, it simply amplified my frustration on this project even more to know that they've built a bridge with similar specifications in the not-too-recent past.
Yeah, it's very similar. I, I agree. Mr. Lampy?
I wanted to circle back on the part about what we're going to use essentially to keep their attention on the project. As you say, we've got a couple of months with you in the mayoral seat. I don't necessarily think this should be something that has to be driven from the top of the city, but do we have other resources inside of engineering, public works that are...
Yes.
Ready to pick that up?
Yeah, so Andrew's been staffing this with him and always one other person. So either, for a long time it was Jane Allen in a project capacity, but then when Nathan joined, Nathan was assigned to the project as well. So we'll have two. And we'll, we'll talk more as we get closer to it. There are just some things that this position needs to do that Andrew can't do. I mean, Andrew's not allowed to lobby as a public employee, so we just have to be mindful of those contacts. Yeah. I told Mr. Schmidt before the meeting started, I'm blocking two, two weeks of just brain dump time, so that'll probably end up being two days in actuality, but we're going to try.
Good.
Others?
Yes.
Yes.
So, thank you for getting the information after the last meeting in regards from DOT in regards to the contract and the change order process, everything like that. There is a small chance that there's a process to modify the contract through their processing system to potentially get some relief for the businesses, and I emphasize extremely small, because that would mean the state would have to concede giving up some of the penalty money. So I'm going to work with the attorney in getting a draft put together based on what the change order is, with the specifications, in hopes that we get something, because right now we have nothing except for a lot of painful people who are suffering, and this is the chance that we can try to make something work.
Thank you. Anybody else on this topic? Okay. All right, let's move to Ms. Laney's business. You all have the payroll summary of January 22nd to February 7th. Any comments or questions on that one? And then we also have the paid invoices report from January 25th, and cash investments from January 31st. Ms. Davis?
I'd love to hear more about the Safe Haven baby box purchase for $16,000 and what all is involved with that.
Sure. It's a, do you know what it is? Okay. It's being installed at the new fire station.
Okay.
And will be one of the few in the state of Wisconsin. It's a safe surrender box for babies. So right now, they can be surrendered at a few locations, but you have to give the baby to a person. This will allow the baby to be placed in a box, which sounds horrible, but it's a, it's a temperature-controlled video, live video-monitored box, also alarmed, that will be at the new station, and if a baby is surrendered to us, there's a process that, that the company then takes over and assists us with. Doesn't take over, but assists with.
Thank you.
Maintenance is, you can chime in if you'd like to, or Stephen, Ken, maintenance and all those components are wrapped up in that same agreement. Any other questions? Anything you want to add? Okay. All right, let's move to licenses. You all have the licensing memo from the clerk that pertains to our action items. The first is review and take action on an application for a Class B malt and liquor license for Silver Creek Investors doing business as the Watertown Country Club. Dan Rayfeldt is the agent, and they're located at 1340 North Water Street. I will just point your attention, everyone, though, to that this one does have some conditions, and those conditions are listed in the memo from the clerk. Is there a motion? Mr. Smith?
I would approve, excuse me, I would move for the approval of the Class B malt and liquor license, subject to the specified conditions set forth in the memo.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Mildenhauer. Chief, do you mind grabbing, are you getting it? Thank you. Yes.
Looking through this one, there were two things that caught my eye.
Thank you, Megan.
One was, one was the retroactive time period on this thing that extends back to 2024. Is that normal?
I'm going to let Megan answer that question. I think you get licensed, he's asking for the duration of time for the license approval going back to July 1st of 2024 for the country club. Do you get licensed for the whole year? So it'll, it was Mr. Lampy. Sorry, we, of all the times for us to have you do something separate, Mr. Lampy, why don't you just repeat? That'll be easier. So we're talking about the country club.
Just wondering why we saw a retroactive time period in 2024, and I think that ended.
Yeah, that's just the licensing here.
Okay. The second one that I saw on, on the application is that there was a notation that there wasn't necessarily a trained agent or proprietor. Is that naturally one of the conditions of a license, is that eventually they have to have a licensed bartender at the establishment?
Correct. So like an agent or a licensed bartender?
In, in the application, it asks about licensing. And the, the answer to the question was a no, in terms of an agent or an owner. Or also, I saw, it seems a little odd to me that we wouldn't also ask for somebody to eventually get that, either explicitly or implicitly.
Can you tell me what section of the...
All right, page 81. Dive into this thing. Okay, page 82, question five, where it talks about satisfying the responsible beverage server training for the license period, and then it lists partners, agents, sole proprietors.
So they checked yes to question five?
Can I read that backwards?
Yeah, it says yes.
Okay.
That's why you were stumping, Megan.
I, I totally understand. All the rest of them are supposed to be, are supposed to be no. Okay.
Good. Okay, are you good? Okay, very good. Other questions about this Class B? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Very good. Next is to review and take action on the application for a temporary Class B wine and temporary Class B license for Luther Prep School Booster Club. This is at 1300 Western Avenue. This is for Lives Prepared, a Gift of Talents event on Saturday, March 29th, from 5:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. Mr. Smith?
I'd move for the approval of the temporary Class B wine and for Luther Prep Booster Club.
All right, motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Mr. Barts. Any discussion from anyone? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, next is the application for the temporary Class B license for the Whiskey and Wine Walk hosted by The Chamber on April 26th. You see all of the different locations for that event listed in the agenda. Is there a motion for this one? Motion by Mr. Mildenhauer, second by Mr. Smith. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, our last then is review and take action on the application for the operator license for Abel Rivera. This was a recommended denial, correct, Megan?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith?
I would move for the denial of this application based on categories one and five.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Barts. Any comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, let's move to ordinances. The next is ordinance 25-03. This is to amend Chapter 288, Erosion and Sediment Control. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works on its first reading. Motion by Mr. Board, second by Mr. Lampy. Any discussion, questions, comments? You want a little Cliff Notes? Sure. Andrew, you want to give us a little high level, please?
Yeah, for sure. So there's three overarching changes being proposed for Chapter 288. These three changes are largely to mirror section NR151 of DNR code. The first change being proposed is to include a peak flow exemption for post-construction stormwater runoff for sites that drain directly to large water bodies like the Rock River. The second proposed change is to add an exemption for food production on minor roadway reconstruction projects. Both of these mirror that in our 151 DNR code. The third proposed change is to add and clarify citation authority for sites that don't have a permit.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes.
Does this pertain to any of the feedback that we got from the stormwater sessions from last year, or is this strictly to bring us into alignment with state code?
Andrew?
These are more housekeeping, and this second to bring us in line with state code.
I agree.
Okay.
Other comments or...
I have one question.
Mr. Blenke.
On page 118 of the packet, under enforcement, one of the additions is issue a citation. Do we have a mechanism in place for that?
Andrew?
We do, and Stephen, correct me if I'm wrong. Maureen and I met with the city attorney last week and discussed this, and we believe there is a mechanism in place to issue a citation for this section of code.
Stephen, you...
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Anybody else? Megan? Board?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blenke?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Maldenhauer? Davis?
Aye.
Lampy? Motion passed nine to zero. Thank you. Next is ordinance 25-04, this is to amend Chapter 453, Stormwater Management, again from Mr. Board and Public Works on the first reading. Motion by Mr. Board, second by Mr. Bartz? Any questions or comments? Andrew, fair summary, same, is this housekeeping as well?
This is, there was an incorrect reference, so this corrects that.
Any additional comments or questions? Megan? Board?
Aye.
Bartz?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Schmidt? Wetzel? Maldenhauer? Davis?
Aye.
Lampy? Motion passed nine to zero. Thank you, let's go to resolutions. The first is Exhibit 9705, this is a resolution to execute the waiver of conflict of interest for, for Axley. This is here from me. Motion by, motion by Mr. Lampy? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Stephen, do you want to provide a quick, I don't know if this group has had one of these yet.
So, in order for an attorney to represent a client that's opposed to a former client, they have to get a waiver of conflict, and that's what they're requesting. It's a fairly common practice. In the past, the city attorney has just signed these themselves. I think there's been one since I've started here. However, there was a recent opinion from the Bar Association that in order for the waiver to be provided, it needs to be from the council, not just from the city attorney. So that's why I brought this resolution to you guys.
Yes.
So is this to release Stephen to represent somebody or?
So from time to time, Axley will represent us. They haven't represented us since Stephen has been here, but they did under our previous city attorney.
Okay.
And someone wants Axley to hire them in opposition to us. So Axley is saying, we represent you from time to time, but now I have a matter because of the police department, and Axley wants to be able to represent that resident, or citizen, I should say, I don't know if they live here.
Okay.
So we're just saying, we checked in with chief, chief, you were comfortable with this?
Correct.
I was, so.
Clarifications or defense of the individual, it's not a claim against the city.
Okay.
Okay, that helps, clarify a lot.
Oh, I'm, I'm very glad Stephen's clarifier from my very nonofficial response was helpful. Sometimes I just try to distill it down. Any, any other questions on this one? Stephen, are you fine with a voice vote?
Yes.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's go to Exhibit 9706. This is a resolution to remove delinquent personal property taxes. This is here from me and the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve 9706.
Thank you, Mr. Bartz, second, second by Ms. Davis. Any questions or comments on this one? Megan? Bartz?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt? Wetzel? Maldenhauer? Davis? Lampy? Board? Motion passed nine to zero. Thank you. Next is Exhibit 9707, this is a resolution toward the West Street Water Tower Rehabilitation Project to O&amp;J Coatings. This is here from Mr. Board and Public Works.
I'll move for 9708.
Motion by Mr. Board, second by Mr. Lampy? Questions, comments?
Just one question.
Yes.
Have we looked at the quality and breadth of work that this company has done on this type of project in the past?
Andrew, I don't want to put you on the spot, or Mr. Board, I'm not sure, I wasn't at Public Works.
Yes, we have.
Okay.
They basically do this kind of work all over the country.
Okay.
They come highly.
Do they special, they specialize in this? This isn't like something they do in addition to other work, this is?
This is a specialty of the company.
Okay.
They come highly regarded.
Thank you.
Good question. This is an exciting one. The, the water tower look completely different, yes ma'am?
I was wondering who on the city staff will be responsible for overseeing this particular project?
Andrew, I presume the answer to that is Pete?
Correct, and I believe he's hired Strand to perform inspection almost too.
Other questions or comments? It was 9707, my exhibit says 9708. And the second was Mr. Lampy. My agenda says 9707. But my, my exhibit says 9708. So what would you like?
9708? Oh seven?
It is confusing though, because the resolution on the agenda says oh seven, and my packet says oh eight.
Oh, they're off by one.
They are. So we'll leave it with you, you just, you let us know which way it should go. So that was, was it Bart, or was Board and then Lampy? You're good there, okay. Any, any other comments or questions? Megan? Board?
Aye.
Bartz?
Aye.
Blankie?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel? Maldenhauer? Davis? Lampy?
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero. All right, next is Exhibit 9708. This is the resolution to enter into the contract with HydroCorp for crossconnection inspections. This again is from Mr. Board and Public Works.
It's listed in the packet as 9709.
They're going to be, that's why I'm going to be very clear about the titles. Mr. Smith?
I'd move for the approval of 9708.
The contract with HydroCorp? Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Wetzel. So we're talking about a HydroCorp contract, this is for crossconnection inspections. Questions or comments? Megan? Smith? Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel? Maldenhauer? Davis?
Aye.
Lampy? Board? Bartz? Blankie?
Aye.
Motion passed nine to zero. Very good, next is Exhibit 9709, this one is a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation, Hoffman Matts LLC, and the City of Watertown. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Motion by Mr. Maldenhauer, second by Ms. Davis. This is just a name change. We're going, they were going from Greater Watertown Community Health Foundation to Hoffman Matts. That's the change here, correct, Stephen?
That's correct, but there is still a guarantee from the Watertown Health Foundation.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Very good, next is Exhibit 9710, this is a resolution to amend the Employee Handbook of Policies and Procedures for our military leave policy. This is also here from me and the Finance Committee. Mr. Lampy?
For 9710, the resolution to amend the Employee Handbook.
Thank you, sir. Second by Mr. Bartz, motion by Lampy? Questions, comments?
Could we have a summary of the change, please?
Sure. So there, I'm gonna start with the reason behind updating it. So the biggest reason for the update is our policy, our current policy, not this amended version, kept our commitment to payments when our guard members or military members go on their two-week-a-year training to two weeks a year and the weekend. We've been watching for a little bit of time, honestly, at this point, probably at least over a year. And those trainings are extending into three weeks and into three days instead of those two days. So we originally wanted to open up the policy to be able to give us that flexibility to honor that guard time. We compiled a group of a current member of the guard, Luke's in the guard, correct? A current member of a guard, of the guard, a recently retired guard member, and then Sherry, who does a lot of the processing of this, of this type of work. And they produced the version that's before you. The additions beyond what I just shared with you are an adaptation of existing state and federal law. We're just incorporating that law explicitly into our handbook. Anything else that I'm missing, Stephen or Mark? I think that would, that covers it, Mr. Blankie? Or Stephen, do you have something else?
No, I was just gonna say that's pretty clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, Mr. Board?
How many members of our staff are involved in this?
I'd have to ask Lisa for that number.
Are we talking 20%, 10%, 5%?
I'd say five to 10.
Yeah, it'd be closer to 5%, I think.
Any, yes?
Just a positive on this one. So what this does is this goes above and beyond what law requires us to do. Law only requires us to allow the time off, it doesn't require us to split the pay difference. So by extending that split pay difference from two weeks to three weeks, shows a lot of good faith and trust of employees that we do have, and I think it will help recruitment processes as we grow. So that's a positive thing.
Thank you. I think the police department wins awards for being.
Yeah, I can remember an award given to Chief Kaminsky three or four years ago, just a recognition from the guard for a solid support from an employer sort of situation.
I can take no credit for this, I'm, I'm grateful that we had some members of the guard and our, our team member that was willing to put the work in to produce it for us, and then the leadership team reviews it, and then it comes before finance, and you all. Any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, our last resolution is Exhibit 9711, this is a resolution to approve the Building Safety and zoning fee schedule. This is here from me and the Finance Committee. Motion by Mr. Maldenhauer, second by Ms. Davis. Questions or comments? Yes.
How much of an increase on these are there from last year to this year?
Yeah, so it's gonna depend. Brian, do you want to provide a little update? If you're talking, you're on mute, Brian. Oh, there you go.
All right. So the, there, there aren't a whole lot of, well, I guess there's a couple differences in different sections. The, the fees for the, the building, building permits, like houses and things, are, are best looked at on that table at the back, that's kind of, well, I don't know if you have that in your packet or not, but the Finance Committee did, there was a example comparison table, for like example, a single-family home would go from about $1,350 to about $2,000. The basement refinish would go from about $570 to $660. A kitchen remodel would be about two, from $250 to about $340. And then like a deck would be from about $93 to $125.
Do you want to share a little bit of the why behind this one?
Well, it, it's, part, part of it is, is making the the fee schedule, the, the state fee is the same, others of it are to just basically get it, us in line with what other communities are, are charging, and to cover the actual costs of incurred by the city to administer the building process.
Any, Mark?
And just to indicate that this was the last review 10 years ago, so it's about time.
Thank you. Others? Yes.
I just, I'm glad Mark clarified, because I was, my concern is anytime I hear what other communities are doing.
I know.
I have serious issue with that, because we're not other communities.
Sure.
And if our administrative costs are less, then we shouldn't be charging higher rates unnecessarily. But if it hasn't been touched in 10 years, then I can see a justification for an increase as long as it's actually proportional to what our cost is and not just padding of books.
Yeah, no. I think for us, we try to stay, you know, competitive, relevant with our administrative costs. And then also just, you know, balance the philosophy of if we're, if this is something that we should be passing on to a taxpayer to subsidize, or essentially a user fee for the person that needs the permit. And that's why you'll see changes like this proposed. Anyone else? Let's take a roll. Maldenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Board? Bartz? Blankie?
Aye.
Smith? Schmidt?
Aye.
Wetzel? Motion passed nine to zero. Thank you. We are at the opportunity for another opportunity for comments from citizens present. No one's in the room, anyone remotely? All right, I would ask then for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Maldenhauer, all in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.